This will be another.
Now it's on, the red light's on.
The red light's on. The Newton Board of Adjustments has called the order at 7:30 PM on the sixth of the month.
Recording in progress.
Jim, could you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Kozak. Try that.
Try that.
Oh, he'd go to mute.
Okay, wait a second.
Jim, on your, on your speaker.
No.
No.
There. I had to mute the laptop.
Yeah. You might want to put your.
Okay. Mr. Kozak.
Microphone back on your shirt.
Here.
Mr. Hamel.
Present.
Mr. Conley.
Present.
Mr. Gibbs.
Present.
Ms. McCarthy.
Present.
All present are counted.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we do not have any public meetings. There's four preliminary hearings. And what the preliminary means is that the only, only people that can ask questions of the applicants are the board members. The public is not allowed to ask anything till a public meeting. And this, this, the reason we're doing this because more times than not, there's paper information. In fact, the first one we did tonight, we've been delayed for a couple of months. So we try to get those nitty gritty things that we're missing a lot of times. And when we have a public meeting, we don't have to tell the applicant to go home. You know, he spent money to put the notifications out to the public and so forth. So basically, that's the big difference between a public meeting and a preliminary meeting. So tonight, we're going to start off with the one that, this is for a couple of months, I believe. It's the continuation of 125 Development, Request for Public Hearing for Relief from Section X1AV, specifically to allow more than one dwelling unit on a lot for the land off Puzzle Lane, New Hampshire. Properties are referenced as Tax Map 14, Block 1, and lots 21-1.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to recuse myself from this case.
Okay. I'm sorry. You're a full member. Excuse me one second. What? He said he made. What? He was supposed to be sworn in as a member. He was positive? Because you wouldn't serve an Allen's last term? I'm sorry about that, sir. Yeah. Trish was supposed to be sworn in as a full-time member, and they screwed up at the town hall after they get that squared away. But anyway, they're going to make Ms. McCarthy a voting member this evening.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Good for me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Barry Guyer. I'm with Jones and Beach Engineers here for the applicant. As you alluded to, we were here a couple of months on this project. It is 20 acres in the residential A-zone. The property is currently landlocked. If you can look on the plan, I'll point out to you, just to give you an idea where it is.
Mr. Kozak.
Everybody have any plans, guys?
Mr. Kozak?
Yes.
Have, would you have him bring the easel over if he's going to, he can't be heard if he walks away from the microphone?
Yeah, you want to bring it.
I'll try not to do that.
Bring it right over there.
Can I bring it right to you?
Okay. Yeah. We'll have the public move a little bit.
It's adjacent to the open space residential to the north. We have industrial commercial property to the south. These two lots are part of the Southern New Hampshire Industrial Park. The intent of the project is to construct a multifamily residential project consisting of 55 units and 11 buildings, the purpose of which is really to support the need of the industrial prod park with workers. The residential A-zone restricts the lot to no more than one family dwelling, and therefore, we are requesting a variance to Section 14, Romanum 14.1 of the Newton zoning regs to allow more than one residential unit on a lot. This is a use variance instead of a, as opposed to a dimensional variance. The project will require to obtain site plan approval from the planning board. So granting of the variance only grants the applicant the ability to construct the 55 units and 11 buildings on the subject lot. You're not approving the site plan, just the ability for the 55 units in the 11 buildings. So with that, I don't think we want to go through the variance criteria tonight.
No, I just have a question, a couple of questions. There seems to be a discrepancy in the way some of the applications are here. One says workforce housing, the other says just apartments. Is this a workforce housing project?
The intent is to do workforce housing.
All right, okay.
So it's 55 units and 11 buildings.
Okay. And Tom, I think I asked Tom earlier, I think it's, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, 51% have to be two bedrooms and 49% in one bedrooms to classify as a, okay, I just want to make sure, okay. Any questions from the board members before we continue on? I have one question here. When I was going through the paperwork the other day, and I was looking at the denial from the building inspector back in December, and it always kind of stuck with me because when I, when I looked at these site plans, this plan here, it really, it really bothers me that it says ZBA site plan because we don't approve plans, and I wouldn't want anybody to get that impression. You know, we're just dealing with that, that one structure there. Do you follow me? So I think it should say preliminary when you come in, you have these plans for us because we can't approve them. So it's kind of like weird. And you know, you got a place here that says approved by the Newton zoning board. Well, that can never happen, you know?
I understand your point. I mean, it's more semantics than anything.
Yes, I.
The board would approve a variance. The site plans would be approved at the planning board.
And I guess that's my question. Why wasn't the site plan approved by the planning board? Did it not go to the planning board?
Well, you have to have a cart before the horse. So the planning board can't approve the plans because it has more than one unit on a lot. So we have to come to the ZBA to get the ability to build more than one unit on a lot. And then we, if we have, if the board grants us that ability, then we go to have a site plan that is approved.
See, that's when, if you read Mr. Shanti's denial, he said site plan approval from the planning board is needed and so forth, one of the five different things. But I guess, I'm not sure about that. But anyway. And the other question I have, you know, there are two pieces of land right now.
Two lots.
Are the, is the intent to join those together or?
They will be merged. If we go ahead and if the project is approved by both the ZBA and the planning board, the lot will be merged.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, gentlemen? Okay. Well, I could move that the applicant be moved to next month, which is, what is the date in, in May? May 4th, is it? I don't have, I should have had a count here, but.
I do.
May 4th?
Yes.
Move for a public hearing on May 4th, 2022.
No move?
Thank you.
Sorry, May 4th.
May 4th, right. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Excuse me?
Okay.
Okay, somebody's mic is muted.
Pardon me?
Probably me. Thanks. I talk loud.
Okay. Okay.
Record show has returned to the board.
Thank you. Okay, the next, next one on our agenda is John Silver and Ashley, I probably pronounced this right or wrong, Gerario, Request for Public Hearing for Relief from Section X111-10, specifically to allow more than one electric meter on their house at 41 Highland Avenue. The property is referred to as Tax Map 5, Block 4, Lot 20. Who's speaking right now?
I'm John Silver.
Yeah, John Silver, okay.
And you nailed my wife's last name correctly.
Okay, well, thank you.
It's surprising.
Okay, if you'd like just to present what you're doing to the board, please. And I think this is for a accessory apartment, correct?
Correct. My in-laws actually close on their house tomorrow. They moved in this, this past weekend. And so we wanted to build an ADU for them. They're 64 and 69. It's a single floor dwelling, studio apartment style, just so they can be independent and separate from us. The barn is attached to the house. Essentially, the, the bylaws state that all the, all the utilities need to be shared. And even proposing the second meter, we intend to share all the utilities. Currently, in my main dwelling, I have 100 amp service with 100 amp sub-panel on the second floor. So because of the long lead time on the 400 amp meter socket that would need to power everything, it's currently 11 months to wait for this, we're asking that if we can do a separate service that would still be shared between the main dwelling and the ADU. I did talk to the fire chief because I know he has concerns about safety and killing the power, and both meters would be next to each other on the front of the building. Should there be an emergency, they could still shut down both meters. We're not going to do a separate meter in the back of the house.
You're putting another 100 amp service in?
A 200 amp service. The load calculations call for about 300 amps anyways, but they don't make a 300 amp service. They only make a 1, a 2, and a 4. So we'd like to add a second 200. The 200 would be shared between the 100 amp sub-panel on my second floor and the ADU, and the existing 100 amp service would still serve the first floor of my main house.
Any questions, gentlemen?
My, my question is that if the 200 amp service is going to be shared between the ADU and the main house, why does he need a variance? Can we just find that, that he has met the requirement of shared utility?
Because he's going to have two meters.
What was he, does he?
The, the, there's one meter that's going to be strictly in the main house, and the other meter is going to be shared between the main house and the ADU. The ADU is going to be sharing.
Are you, so these two separates coming in from the pole?
Correct.
Or you're sub-metering one off the other?
It's, it would, well, no, it's two separate services coming in off the pole because that's the, that's the meter socket enclosure that I am able to get.
Sure. So, so I think he's asking because it's no longer shared.
You read the denial.
No, it is shared.
It is shared, yeah.
The 200 meter service will be shared between the main house and the ADU. The ADU is not going to be, have a, a meter to itself.
I see what you're saying.
Yes, it will. Jim, go ahead.
As somebody who has a building, believe it or not, my little shop.
Yep.
Has two meters on it. The difference is whether or not they're both meters or on the same account, or if they're going to have separate accounts. Once you have separate accounts, it could be said that you're separating your, your electricity. However, both of my meter readings show up under the same account.
And in this case, the, the 200 amp service could, has, it's servicing both units.
Right.
So it can't be separated from, the ADU cannot have a separate power source.
I'm simply stating what I just said.
Yeah.
That could be your condition of, you could issue a decision this evening, basically stating that as long as they're, both meters are read to the same account, that it is not separate, that it is shared.
I'm wondering, with the denial from Mr. Donovan, the building inspector, if he, if you notice here, if you have a copy of the denial, "The primary dwelling unit in accessory apartment shall share common utilities, including wells, septic, blah, 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 blah." I take it that all that's true?
Yes.
And when you read common utilities, is that how we interpreted that, that you can only?
But I'm, yes, I'm questioning that interpretation, that as long as the, the new service is going to be shared between the main house and the ADU, it meets the requirement of the, of the ordinance.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I, I agree. Well, you know, in all fairness to the client here, Jim wanted to have a public hearing on this. I just want to tell you how I felt about it. And you know, instead of having a preliminary. And I said, this has never happened before to the board since I've been on it 30 years. So I wanted to make sure that we all had it because this could come up again sometime, and let us see where it could. And I thought it would be a good, you know, a good thing to, so we could talk about it and make some decisions on it. Mike, what do you think, Mike?
I think he's right. If, if that power is going from the pole to a meter that's going into both dwellings, then that's a shared. There's nothing to, you can put five meters on one account and eventually carve one off on its own. But as long as the meter is tapping electricity going into both, it's a shared. So I don't think, I think it goes back to the inspector.
Interpreting it that.
Interpreting it because it is shared. I don't think he needs to be in front of us.
Well, I'll be honest with you, when I read it, that's how I thought it, what it meant, that, you know, one, one unit. But I, after discussing it and looking at it and saying, I didn't think so, I think we just.
As long as it's, if it was sub-metered, it's different.
Yeah.
But because, as Ryder said, it's, it's coming in from the pole, going into, the power is going into two dwellings.
Yeah.
As long as you realize if you take that off, then you yourself will put yourself in violation.
It changes the dynamic. And I'm not an electrician, and a service is a serious, it's not like changing a power cord on a tool that you.
No, it's not.
You know?
No, it's not.
Mr. Chair, I spoke to Mr. Donovan today, and he also explained the reason for the denial was that in, all through our town, any ADUs have just one set of utilities going into it. The minute you put a second meter, regardless of what pole it came from, it violates that ordinance that he cited in that letter. And he said, that's why he denied it. And that we, certainly the applicant can go back to him, but the way he explained it to me violates the zoning, and it would potentially set a precedent for everybody else that has an ADU that now can go get separate meters. And that can turn into a nightmare. So I would suggest Mr. Donovan be checked or asked again to make sure that we're all understanding it on the same page because it's certain, we've got three different people here, plus the applicant. We all have a different opinion.
The new meter is not going to be 100% for the ADU.
Right.
Correct.
Because your well is still off the first meter.
And the first floor and the ADU.
Correct.
So it isn't 100%. It's shared.
Correct.
The way I look at it. I don't see a problem.
Yeah. But I mean, I, I think Trish has a good point with Bob was bringing up, you know? And I, and I think there's some fear here also that multiple meters, and that's what we all feel, that if your in-laws leave, it's going to be turned into an apartment for someone you could rent down.
Right. And you know, if there's some sort of conditional by law granted into this that, you know, should it?
I, if, that's the other thing that we could do. It would probably make the paperwork clearer if we did go to public hearing, had the hearing, and then if we approved it with condition that, basically, that 200 amp service never gets separated between the main unit and the ADU.
You can see what the building inspector's concerns were, you know, setting a big precedent, you know?
I have one more question.
Sure.
Totally bizarre. I'm just blown away. Unitill told you 11 months?
11 months.
That is unbelievable. And you, there's no.
You realize it's a metal box, right?
Right. We can't circumvent that somehow. That's unbelievable.
So, and they told me I could expedite it.
How much money?
$11,000.
There you go.
I'm sorry, what was it?
Expedite it for $11,000. And I asked, what's the expedition? And they said, well, we can give you that after you decide to expedite it.
Wow.
11,000, you say that?
So basically, I pay $11,000, and they tell me how expedited it is. Oh, now it's 10 months. You know what I mean? Like, I.
Wow.
I mean, this is, I'm in the wrong business.
Seriously.
Remind Unitill that there's not a lot of housing being built right now.
Wow.
And they're full of it because that's the industry I'm from.
Well, if, to be honest with you, I would have, I would have fought a little bit harder, but I am in construction in the city, and I mentioned it to my colleagues, and they're like, yeah, we've been hearing that with the meter sockets in general.
Really?
And it's going to be a matter of time before it's the same way with the 200 amp, which is why I wanted to kind of get in front of you guys now because I'm, I'm getting very nervous.
Sure.
Yeah, here's the one thing that I'm looking at. Not a lot of houses have 100 amp service today. I mean, that's probably really the exception, older homes and so forth, you know? So they, they probably ought to at least have 200, which would probably have eliminated his problem if he had 200.
Sure.
And, and the, you know, because we're building this ADU, we're, we're forward-thinking, and a 200 would suffice right now. But, you know, next year, the year after, we're planning on putting in a pool and heat pumps. And with the load calculations I did with the electrical engineer.
So at that time, maybe you just replaced the one with 400 or whatever, yeah?
Yeah. So basically, if I was going to upgrade to 200.
Probably won't cost you $11,000.
Yeah. If I upgrade to 200 now, next year, I'm going to have to upgrade to the 400 anyways. And that's how we landed on this nightmare.
All right. Any further questions, gentlemen? Would somebody like to make the motion to move the public hearing to May 4th?
I'll make the motion to make, to move this hearing to May 4th.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Doggett, a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Kozak?
Yes.
That's your name.
The hearing ends at 7:52 PM. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, board.
I will make the recommendation that we, they got to go back and look at that. That's way too vague of an interpretation.
Yeah, I think it's vague too also.
Because technically, he shouldn't be in front of us based on that wording.
Yeah, I know. Thank you. We're just reviewing the, the.
No, I haven't, I haven't, I know what's going on. I read through it. I was like, well, technically, but, you know, I completely understand. I have a whole little piece in town.
And your in-laws now.
Mr. Hamel?
Okay, good. We might be on television. They might be watching us. Be careful. Okay.
Open it, and then, and then I'll. Okay. Okay. Next on the agenda is 125 Development. And I'll read the request. 125 Development, New Hampshire, call for Placid Avenue, request, as requested a public hearing for relief from Section XXV11.8.B, specifics to allow a building activity within 50 feet of poorly drained soils, and Section XXV, specifically to allow building activity within 200 feet setback of residential A for the purpose of four building condominiums, site plan off Main Street in Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 14, Block 1, Lot 27-3.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Like to make a statement?
Yep, go ahead.
In the past, I have always recused myself from consideration of any case involving Lot 141273 because this lot abuts the Sergeant Woods condominium property where I live. Earlier this year, the approved full lot subdivision of Lot 141273 was recorded at the Registry of Deeds. With the creation of Lot 141277, Lot 141273 no longer abuts Sergeant Woods. Though I am listed on the list of abutters submitted by the applicant, I no longer am an abutter to Lot 141273. I therefore feel that there is no conflict of interest and no need for me to recuse myself from consideration of cases involving 141273. I feel that, especially in the, in the case of, the case before us tonight, that I have no direct personal or pecuniary interest in the outcome, which differs from the interests of other citizens. I invite anyone, members of the board, the applicant or his agents, abutters, or members of the general public, to let it be known as soon as possible if they have any concerns with my participating and deciding cases involving Lot 141273. I will take their comments into consideration to determine if I need to reconsider my decision to not recuse myself.
Thank you. Anybody have a question? Move to take jurisdiction of the, the application?
What?
Move to take jurisdiction to find the applicant. Okay. Okay, gentlemen. Any questions? I'd let the gentleman speak here first. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name again is Barry Guyer with Jones and Beach Engineers for the applicant. This is Map 14, Lot 273, consists of 144 acres and a light industrial commercial zone. The intent of this project is to construct Phase 2 of the Southern New Hampshire Industrial Park, which consists of access to Route 108 via New Road, we're calling Industrial Way, construction of a portion of Puzzle Lane extending from Industrial Way, construction of emergency access to Howard Lane, and construction of four commercial and industrial buildings totaling 207 square feet with associated parking, loading, utilities, and drainage. We're here tonight because we need, the proposed construction requires two variances. The first one is to Section Romanum 27.8.B, to allow the building activity required in a building permit be allowed within 50 feet of any poorly drained soils, basically in the wetland buffer. And to, the second one is to Section Romanum 25.1, which is to allow construction of structures within 200 feet of abutting residentially-zoned properties. We would request the board indulge, the, the board's indulgence, as the plans provided are at 40 scale. If the board requires, we can reduce to 20 scale, as is the requirement, without the board's consent. But it appeared the 40 scale to us was sufficient to view the required information. But if there, if the board requires, we can change it to 20 scale, or if there's specific areas that the board requires, we can provide 20 scale areas or bigger of that area, of those areas. Discussing the variances, Phase 2 construction requires 3,246 square feet of wetland impact for the proposed roadways, and 1,211 square feet of wetland buffer impact, wetland buffer impact for the roadway stormwater treatment areas and grading around the buildings. No buildings are located in the wetlands or in the buffer. Majority of the impact is for the roadways and stormwater. Either the stormwater feature itself or swales to direct the stormwater to stormwater treatment. Variance number two is to allow structures within 200 feet of a residential property. The zoning requires a 200-foot structural setback to residential properties. It also requires a 50-foot vegetated buffer to residential properties. The town's strict definition of structure precludes basically anything within that 200 feet. That includes any drainage structures, pipes, catch basins, septic systems, et cetera. We don't believe the items for which we are requesting the relief are detrimental to the abutting properties as they are at or below ground level, so they won't have a visual impact on it. And the variance does not include the buildings, which are all outside of the setback. So with that, I'll take any questions or comments the board has.
Yeah, my first question is that when I'm looking at each variance, I assume that those are from multiple variances.
They are from multiple locations.
Are you looking for one that covers many, many areas of the, of the plans?
Correct. We are.
And the same thing with, the same thing with the second, Section XXV1?
Correct.
Right. Well, I'm not happy with that. I, you know, I looked at the plans, and I studied them several times. I'd have a hard time picking out where all those variances are, okay? One of the requirements that I'd like to have is, and we've done this in the past, and I think even with any of Coleman's projects, is, that's why I was hoping you'd go to the building department before you came here, is, because we don't calculate variances and so forth like that. But what I would like to see, and if any other, if one of the other members disagrees with me, is I'd like to see a list of, I don't care how you're doing, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, on a separate piece of paper, what it entails, and what's the footage you're looking for for a variance.
On a 1 in 20 scale, the variances.
Right.
So you're saying you do want a 20 scale of?
On the variances.
Yeah, right.
On the variances.
On the variances that you're going to present to us.
So if you have 20 variables. So if you have 20 variances, and I don't, it's up to you how you wanna code it, if you wanna label it 1, 2, 20, but then that number to show up on the plan, whatever one you decide to use. So when we're looking at one, we know when we come to the plan that, look at, that's, that's, that's number one. We wanna be able to easily spot those as we're going through the plan. Anybody have a problem with that, gentlemen?
No, that's what we've always required.
Okay, that's what we've always required, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's the other thing that, you know, I, I know you got here because the, the planning board, I'm not sure exactly what they did, but the circuit rider told you to get variances. But we normally get them from the building inspector, and that's where our denials come through. We really don't have a denial on these variances.
No, but it doesn't, your code says any of the staff, basically. So building inspector, the circuit rider, or whoever makes the decisions.
Circuit rider is not staff, yeah.
Well, I don't have the place listed, but I know it does say that it, that is one of the people that can direct you to a variance. And per state law, I don't need a denial to actually get a variance. I know you guys prefer that.
That is correct, we can override the state law in our procedure, which we've done. And it's worked out well for us in the future, and, you know, in the past, I should say, because at least we have a document that says, hey, this was denied because, boom, you know? And with the variances, but that's number one that I'm looking at, you know? Because I, I'm looking at and looking at all of these variances, especially from the 200-foot setback. It's, whoa, an awful lot. Gentlemen, does, anybody else have any questions on this?
No, but I think, and just to add some color to that, I think it's gonna be important. Once we see that, and I don't know if we're gonna make that a requirement before we go to public, so I'll, I'll park that for now.
Yeah, you know, that's the, that's the other thing, just, Jim, you need this in order to notify the public on a public hearing two weeks before our meeting?
Yes.
Okay, if you cannot get that done before two weeks on these, in plans, please notify Jim and we'll continue it for another month for public hearing. Otherwise, you'd be paying, you know, left and right.
Just, just to add color though, the one.
Yeah.
With history, right? Abutters on this property will show up and look. So we need to make it easy for them too that don't always look at plans. So that's kinda why it's important to understand each variance where it is so that if the public's looking, whether it's their property, that it's abutting or not, they can understand, especially if it's their property, so they understand what's being asked.
Sure.
So that's, that's part of the reason why we ask that stuff.
Gentlemen, what do you think? Maybe we should just have another continuance of preliminary to make sure we're satisfied with the documents?
Well, first of all, can, Jim, can you pull up a calendar and say, what's the last date that you would have to receive something? Because it looks like really this would be a lot of work.
Yes, definitely, yeah.
I mean, there, there were a lot of places that he suggested.
That gives you two weeks.
Yeah.
Gives you 14 days.
Yeah, I mean, it's possible, but we can also, as the chairman said, ask for a variant or a continuance.
I think we would be better off.
To have another, give them a continuance now.
If you're amenable, that we basically say that months from now, we'll do another preliminary. You'll, we'll have a chance then to, to look at everything that you've done to say, yeah, okay, now, now we've got things that we can go to, to a hearing, and then we'll do the hearing the month after that.
Yeah, I don't think we have an issue with that because we are still in the planning board process. So it's gonna take, you know, a few meetings to get through that.
If the applicant is amenable for that, I, I would say, I make a motion to continue. Well, maybe it's too early.
Any, any comments?
No.
Oh, that's fine.
Go ahead, Roger.
Before, before you vote, just make sure that there are any, aren't any other comments that I need to address before the next meeting.
Is there anything else, gentlemen, do you wanna see on these?
At this point, we're really only talking, we're not talking about the substance of the, of the proposal. Once the public hearing starts, then we would talk about, or have questions about the substance. Right now, we're basically just looking at.
What are we missing, what do we need?
The mechanics of the application.
Understood, but if there's anything specific that we can address, then we can get time to do it.
I think the chairman has covered, at least from my point of view, all of the, the questions I had about the mechanics.
Yes, okay.
And I think going to that next level of detail, you'll probably get more feedback at that point.
Yeah, definitely.
Roughly, how many variances do you think you need?
Roughly, I couldn't tell you. I know for the wetland buffer impact, I think we have 11 locations where we have buffer impacts. For the setback within the 200 feet, I, it's around 10-ish, I'm guessing, where there's either maybe a catch basin or a pipe. And I'm assuming that you're gonna, you're asking for each of those instances where it's a catch basin or a pipe.
Yes.
So.
That's why it's hard for us to pick 30 locations on this set of plans.
Sure, but, you know, what we were, the way we had it labeled, we showed you what the locations were. So we had drainage structures within 56 feet, one and a quarter inch.
Right, I saw those three.
Right, so those are the locations.
Many others that are a problem.
Those are the closest locations. So if they're, you know, that would allow us to do the most restrictive was what we were looking at. But if you want each instance.
Yes, definitely.
Which board has said, then we can provide that as well.
And the one other thing that I'd like to see eliminated is that the ZBA site plan, and I really.
Understood, Mr. Chairman, we'll make sure to change that.
It's just a car in my throat. Anything that says approved by the plan, well, this one here says approved by the planning board, this one here. But it, 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 make it this, the planning board or preliminary, like, anyway. Anybody else have anything to add while, while we have them here tonight, gentlemen? Roger, would you like to make a motion about moving it to next month?
Make a motion that with the approval of the applicant, we continue the preliminary until May 4th.
A second?
Second, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Who seconded that?
Frank.
Frank. Aye. Unanimous, okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. My dad ended up, eight votes seven. God, let me, we just clear some of the stuff out of my, oops, good. We're gonna break these up tonight. Okay. 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 Okay.
Oh, it's next.
Okay. And finally, we have Jason Friedman, Hellman, excuse me. And this is Tark LLC of Gloucester, Mass seeks an equitable waiver from section XXV, subsection 1C for an encroachment of the building at the center line, lot line setback specifically to allow the existing building to have a 3.5 foot, a 3 and 1/2 foot, I'm assuming, encroachment into the setback for building aid of Puzzle Lane. The property is referenced as map 14 block 1 lot 27-6. You have it before, sir?
Good evening, everybody. I don't know if you guys and ladies got the opportunity to read the, the letter just kinda introducing myself to the community here in New Hampshire and what we do and what my background is and how I got to this point. But I'm gonna give you a brief little summary, and then we'll kinda get into the actual request at hand. So, gonna roll back the time a little bit, back in 2004, I went to Bentley University. They decided to give me no financial aid. So I'm like, how am I gonna come up with 300 grand to go to school? So what did I do? I had a previous company that I had a nice exit from before I entered school, and within two weeks, I started up another business. Fast forward to today, that business has grown exponentially to the point where we're hiring left and right, and we're bringing on massive, massive opportunities. Fast forward again to May of 2021, I'm introduced to Coleman McDonough. Tells me and sells me on the story of what this industrial park is gonna come to be. And as a forward thinker myself, I'm like, I could see myself being able to take advantage of the resources that New Hampshire has to offer. I've been working very closely with Cynthia Harrington and with the Office of Business Affairs and Economic Development and such. And she's been a great soundboard as well to get me up into this point. Naturally, the state has several different programs that we can benefit from. And we've kinda really done our homework to see how we can work together and where we can drive value, not only for our company, but for the people around us, because we need bodies. And as everybody knows, and what this gentleman kinda shared with us, the, the supply chain issues out there are insane. It doesn't matter what industry you're in, and what we have found is an opportunity to bring everything stateside. So what traditionally was done, what we do, is we manufacture clothing. We do it a new, we do an old age sort of trade, but we do it in a new school fashion. So essentially, we are literally, I'm a technologist, I'm a geek. So I bring in the most advanced technology into this entire industry. We're very, very disruptive. So what we do is, we're literally making clothing from scratch. I buy rolls and rolls of material from all over the world. We dye it on-site in an eco-friendly manner. We digitally cut it, and in an adjust-in-time production method, we're able to deliver anything you want within 24 hours or less. Now, where a lot of this work has been done overseas and been outsourced and for cost-saving measures, that's not an option anymore. So it's put a feather in our cap, and we've been able to react to a lot of these opportunities, which has driven us to October 27th of last year, when we finally get a purchase and sales agreement for this building, 8 Puzzle Lane. Now, at that time, you know, I, it was my first, it's my first go-around buying any sort of commercial real estate, and I'm lucky enough to have these gentlemen behind me to support me and guide me and assist me during this whole process. But, you know, from that point, the seller of the building said, I wanna close by 12:31. Now, as everybody knows, closing on a piece of commercial property in under two months' time is physically impossible, especially the requirement of having all of the necessary title work addressed, everything, everything, whether it be subdivisions, you name it, all has to be addressed before you can actually sell that piece of property. And that doesn't take anybody in real estate to know that. So with that in mind, we did whatever we could to push this along and try to accommodate the seller. The bank that we were initially working with said, by December 10th, they said, we're doing everything we can, but there's absolutely no way that you can close on financing because, one, the variant for COVID had come, had come into play. There's no one in the bank, they have a boatload of deals that got pushed, pushed, pushed that needed to be done by year end, and why are they gonna put me ahead of anybody else? It's not gonna happen. So we request an extension. And after quite an experience, again, with the seller and his attorney, we finally get this extension approved. That puts us into a March 31st deadline to close on this building. Now, as we partnered with the bank, and they've worked with us hand in hand to get to this point, they do the final, they do a new assessment on the property, so they do a new appraisal. They do a new environmental, and then they do, of course, they do diligence with the title work. To our surprise, or maybe not to our surprise, we see 13 items that have to be rectified on this title in order to sell it. From October 27th until this point, the communication between the seller's representation and the seller has been minimal. And in times, it was giving us the, the impression that they wanted to do anything they could to kill this deal, that they have $50,000 of my deposit money in hand, and we haven't been able to close this. So as I look at all of this information, and I review exactly what is the problem that can't be addressed in an office and has to be addressed here with all of you? Is this pizza-shaped component of the building that goes over a lot line that physically can't be cut off of the building, but it's part of the driveway going in? And that's where we're at. I have, when I, I, when I say this, I have countless opportunities that I have now lost because of all of the delays caused by the seller and his representation. And I'm at the point where I can either, I have one foot on the dock and one foot in the boat. If I get on the boat, we're in Newton, and this thing's gonna boom because I have everything lined up. I cannot afford to miss any more of these opportunities and deadlines. And I'm a young guy, I got plenty of time ahead of me. I wanna grow this thing, and naturally, everyone has a plan to get out someday and retire. That's, this is my first step to being able to do so. So as you review these plans that were submitted, you know, again, I'm not an architect, I'm not an engineer, but I understand exactly where we're at, and it's in, you know, my, my great hope here that we're able to address this, cross it off the list, so to speak, and hopefully, you know, come next month, we're setting up the new facility. So, does anybody have any questions?
Gentlemen?
I've got several.
Let's hear them. Hit me, hit me.
Some of them are technical.
I love it.
I mean, in terms of, okay, so the plan for the subdivision actually has, and that shows the little pizza piece in the, within the buffer of the right-of-way. That line is actually a 50-foot line.
Yep.
But the zoning ordinance says that you need to be 75 feet from the center line. So the, the size of the, the little pizza piece, I think, is bigger than 3.5 feet.
Well.
Not a whole lot bigger.
Yeah, no, no, and I totally understand that. Again, you know, I didn't do the engineered drawings.
Right.
So this is all, this is all found information. So again, if, if in the event that 12:31, the, the hopes and dreams of that had occurred, then this would've never gotten done anyway.
Oh, right, right.
And come to find out, the subdivision was not even approved until January 18th, I believe. Therefore, after 30 days of appeal process, they couldn't sell it till the end of February anyway. So, you know, to your point, these are all things that, again, this is not my responsibility. I'm doing it to be proactive in the purchase of, in the acquisition of the building. So I, I totally get your, what you're saying.
The other thing, in one of the emails from your attorney, he mentioned getting revised plans.
Excuse me, that's not from his attorney, that's from the developer's attorney.
Oh, that's the developer's attorney, okay.
Yes, and in addition to that, I was advised and informed from the developer and seller's attorney that he was signing this ZBA application, just so, and that's in writing.
There was a variance on that building, wasn't there?
There was what?
When we, when you did the subdivision?
It was for what?
Wasn't there a variance for that building for something?
I thought so.
Yes, but I don't think it was for that.
No.
It wasn't for the slice, yeah.
I also have another, mostly a question for the board as opposed to for you, is that, is it right-of-way a street?
No.
Well, then, maybe he doesn't need to have.
He doesn't need a variance.
The zoning ordinance says you need to be 75 feet from the center line of a street.
Right.
Right.
That's a private way.
If there is no street, you don't have to be 75 feet away from it.
Therefore, this is considered part of the driveway, is how I was told.
Right.
So it's kinda, it's not applicable to the actual, the 75-foot rule.
Right, and I mean, is that really more of what we should be doing? Is making a determination that this variance request that he has is not necessary? So it's saying that it is already in compliance.
Right, well, I'd assume it would be in compliance regardless, just because the building had a previous tenant of eight years.
How did you come up with this, that you required a variance? By who?
I mean, I, you know, after we got the title back, number 13 on the, the issues with the title was this particular issue. So after that, I contacted my attorney. My attorney says, you gotta talk to the town and see how do you address that? Because now I'm, I'm under the gun with the bank.
Ah, I can guess.
Because if we don't, we only have a short period of time to get this all situated. If it doesn't, we lose financing, and then we're back to square one. So I put in over, over a year now into this, and I'm spending more effort as a real estate guy than a fashion and tech guy.
So, in or, in order to? So in, in order to satisfy your bank, we would either grant you a variance or would a, a decision from us that there is no need for a variance. That would, that would also satisfy your bank.
Exactly.
As long as we got an official decision from us.
Correct.
Yeah, I would think so. I think you're absolutely right, Roger.
I mean, you know.
Anybody have an issue here?
Are we all?
I think we're all on the same.
Satisfied that a driveway is not a street?
Is not a street, correct. Yeah. Jim, any, anything you want to add to that?
Or do we need to get a professional interpretation of that?
This building is situated on a private drive.
Yeah.
Right.
It is not classified as a town road.
That's correct.
Absolutely.
Right. Yes, a couple of things.
It's, not only is it on a private driveway, but the, if you look on your plan, what it, it's showing as the right of way is simply a narrow driveway. It's not a full street width driveway.
Yeah.
That is shown there. So the building, that's one of the egresses to the parking of the building, not anything further in development.
Right. And that's the way it was subdivided.
Is this the property line right here?
If I may correct Mr. Feldman, the plan was actually approved last October. However, it was not recorded until January.
What are you looking for?
It wasn't a case of.
Right there?
No.
Okay, we've got too many people talking.
It was, it was not approved in January, it was approved in October, but it took them till January to get it through all of the process and to be recorded.
We have too many people talking.
The issue is, is that.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
The property line's here and, and the center line of the street.
Okay, all right, okay.
Ah. That's the street right there. That's, that could be it right there, then.
He's, it's not, it's not 75 feet from the street. It's 50 feet from the, what's the setback, the front setback of a, again, there is no streets.
No, there's no streets, so they don't, they don't apply.
It's irrelevant.
It said this was the street. Is this the street or is that the easement?
Yeah.
It's the right of way. If it's the right of way.
Just to settle this argument, it's the, actually, it's a 55-foot setback from the property line, sorry, 50-foot setback from the property line.
Right. But in this case, the property line is the center line of that right of way or whatever, driveway or whatever. So he is with, the, the corner of the building is within 50 feet of the property line.
Right.
So then he would need a, a waiver for, for that.
I'm listening, yeah.
I, I, I think that, that's really what, what, what he needs is he's.
So you're talking, you're talking how many feet, 50, not 50 feet?
No, no, he, 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 he's three and a half feet from, his, his building is three and a half feet too close to the property line.
Where are your magnifying glass?
What?
Another magnifying glass. This is why we need scale.
Yeah.
Mr. Conley, you have an enlarged version in the packet there.
On the back of the application.
Yeah.
That gets you a little bit closer.
Got it?
This is what I feel like Mr. McGee.
That's as large as it could be enlarged without losing.
Yeah. As long as, yeah, I think, I think, I think, I just don't want to have him walk away with wrong information.
Yeah.
Right? So I think, is, is that the property line right there, then?
Yeah, the property line is that center line there.
Okay.
And that's the 50 feet, the dotted line is 50 feet. So that's how much he's missing by.
So it's, it's the property line, it's not, because that is not a street.
It's the property line.
Okay. I just didn't want you walking away with wrong information.
I appreciate it.
And I think that's not, you know, I mean, he sort of, the, the application is sort of asking for the wrong thing, but it's, but, but we, we can, we could consider it for the, the thing that it needs to be.
Yeah, because we really didn't have a definition of exactly what that issue on the title was because we knew it was something and it was something that had to be solved by the town, you know?
Yeah, so, so that, seeing that it, it's within 50 feet of the.
Would you want to look at?
Within 50 feet of the property line, we should.
This, this, if you, if you look at his application, it, within 50 feet of any lot line, land industrial, is that, well, does that cover it? The no building shall be set 75 feet from the center of the road, but there is no road. So that's gone.
That's gone.
Right? Sorry to talk out loud, we're trying to.
No, yeah, no.
No, so he wants to, to be clear, he wants 50.
Yeah, but, and we probably, in the hearing, should address the idea that that's not a street and put that in the decision in addition to clean that up.
Yeah, because right, right here where it says 75 feet from the center of the street, and that's not needed.
Not at all.
But, but we would still consider it and make a decision based on that.
Definitely would define it, it's a street, which is, it's not a street.
Yeah. And do you understand when you, what you're going to ask for is not, when you ask for a variance, it's from the closest point of the building? So if there's overhangs, your overhang, not the building itself, is the closest point?
Correct. In this case, you know, if you, the, the actual corner of the building is the, the furthest point that reaches outward.
Yeah, as long as I'm giving you the correct.
Yeah.
You run with it, but that's fine.
Yep.
Yeah, and, yeah, so.
Jim, what did you?
I was double, double checking. Like one time there was, there was a discussion of reducing it to 35 and I won, but it happened.
So if we ask him to come back or?
I, I, I think we have all of the data that we need for an equitable to, to do a, a hearing on this.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
But, but, and now that we more understand what the questions are, I think we definitely have to have a hearing.
Is, again, just so that he does this correctly.
Can I ask a question?
Is his request correct?
Okay, you're saying the, his property line is the middle of the road?
Yes, of the driveway, yes.
So he's really 73 feet from the middle of the road and he only needs 50 feet?
Yeah. Well, you pointed out to him, Roger.
What you got is, there's the middle of the road.
Get more, more paper.
And here's 50 feet from the middle of the road.
No, no, that's 50 feet from the edge.
No.
Measure it.
All he needs is the 50 feet.
That's 50 feet from the middle.
I mean, we think he needs that much.
Well, that's just it, he's not asking for 50 feet. He needs to calculate that edge to the property line.
When you calculated, the edge here.
Yeah, yeah.
Come up here, show, we'll show you my, if, if this would be the edge we're talking about, Mike, is this, or that side there? If there's an overhang, okay?
He said it's the corner, he understands that, but it's to the property line, so you're not asking for 50 feet, really.
So we had done the math with the scale.
If you measure from actual area that's, could be looked at, because, you know, if this is the building.
Half an inch.
Wait a minute.
160.
No, no, this.
This little bit that's already been built.
And you're going to want to calculate the distance between the closest point and the property line.
So now the property line's here, that you have some.
Because he blew it out.
Yeah, so if this, if this, right, right, if the overhang stood there, that's what you'd be looking for.
That's a variance. You're not, and that variance is, let's say it's, let's say you're seven feet from the property line, then you're asking for 43 feet variance. You're not asking for the seven feet.
Right.
Okay.
It's 40 feet.
So, 1/10 of an inch.
Okay.
And.
This is not bad.
Yeah, oh, I understand. We're going to get a shirt out of this, Mike, which you.
Alaski Street, that's over by Fenwick, right?
Right down the street.
Yeah. And what year did you go to Bentley?
Graduated away, got my MBA in 2010.
Oh, you're young, forget that, okay. My cousin was the priest there for years. Father Hank, Father Henry? Henry Gagnon?
The three and a half.
He's in the early 90s.
Yeah, we don't have a big one.
Oh, it's all over the place down there. Yeah, yeah. Way before your time.
Okay, I think we're, yeah, they're going to, wait till these gentlemen are through our discussion.
Just make sure these guys don't have any other questions for you.
That's the scale you got it.
Spread out?
Right, but that's a 1, 200.
We need to get scale. Try to avoid people coming up to the table and talking.
Well, we wanted to point.
I can't hear any of that.
Okay. That's right.
All I heard was something about a free shirt, which I will not put in the minutes.
Okay, wait till they're done, take a look at the.
So what kind of fashion is this? What kind of?
So, I mean, we've done everything. I've done all the stuff for Elton John's tours, Lady Gaga's tours. Our 3D technology is really.
You're upset with that?
Really good for sports. So we do stuff for the Celtics, Bruins, Red Sox, Patriots.
It's definitely not a road.
Right, right. Literally able to design in real time, everything in 3D.
Right of way is only 40 feet wide.
Digitally try it on with your selfie cam.
It will never be a road.
No, never be, no. So he's, he needs a variance from the property line, that's it.
Technology and what we're doing with licensing agreements is crazy, so.
Good for you.
A lot of computer work.
Probably being in the utility business, now that's fun.
Mr. Chair?
I, hang on one second.
Do I understand it correctly, this needs to be changed from, from the center line of the road to the property line?
Correct, yeah.
Right.
But that, that's what the application does say. It says 75 feet from the center line.
Which, which, which is.
Within 50 feet of the lot line.
Right.
And we're, that's, that's what we're going to.
But it's striking.
The 75 feet.
The 75 feet from the central.
No, leave that, leave that in so we make it, we'll make a definite decision that that doesn't apply.
Okay.
Just in right of way.
Oh, that way we can, yeah.
We can always strike it from, okay, all right, okay. Did you hear what he said? Leave the 75 foot in there on your application and then do the other calculation.
Because on the record, it's going to go down as it's not an actual street.
We're kind of unsure we're a road or a lane, so, you know, better off to have it in there, we can strike it out if it's not.
Yeah, you know, it's always easy to take away and then to.
We'll put a letter together, fire. If we, if we approve it, which it probably, good chance it is, we'll, we'll put a nice letter together for you for the bank. Any other questions, gentlemen?
Yeah, I want to go over that with him again.
Okay. You want to go over that with?
The measurements.
Roger.
I'm not seeing it.
Okay. You want a pencil rather than that?
I'm going to call Mr. DeMelt, DeSmeltnick. I purposely, he said, okay, Trish is going to finish out Alan's year.
And if we measured on here.
It's probably a typo by Mary Jo.
It's 1/10 of an inch.
Because he said, you know, she'll be up next year for, you know, I'll call him and say, hey, come on. I'll be in the world, hey.
It isn't. We can still do it.
Just here on the 50.
You know, I felt really comfortable today.
I did too.
In what I, when what the policeman did there, boy, he knows so much.
The building is there.
Easygoing. But you know, like I said, that's why I made my comment. Everybody, even the guy next to me, if I had a question and he's doing whatever he was doing, everybody, nobody's afraid to communicate, like, nobody says, hey, you done bad, you know what I mean? It's, it makes you feel good, part of the team, it really does, yeah.
It does. It was a different atmosphere than in the past.
Yeah, well, the two ladies made some great comments.
Yeah.
Yeah, which was good.
And only security already called me and said, they were so happy, it was awesome.
Really?
Yeah, yeah.
Trish, you did a, you do a hell of a job.
Well, thank you. It was good.
You, you deserve all the credit. I don't know, I don't know where you're getting all your energy at your age, boy. Some days I feel, you know, I don't sleep, I'm, I'm having a serious issue sleeping. Sometimes my ass is dragging so bad after three or four hours. Anyway, let's move this on, okay? Are we all set now?
Is he comfortable?
Yeah, he's just deceiving. He is.
Okay.
He's still working on it.
Yeah. Well, let him feel comfortable with the heckin', you know.
And so they're saying this little corner right here, this is erasable, so I can erase this if you want me to.
That's the center line, it measures 15.
It did. Okay.
Yeah, Jack, I think they're all.
You comfortable?
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we move this to the May 4th.
Tom have something to say?
Sorry. Oh, okay, so I was making the motion that we move this and put it on the agenda for our May 4th hearing.
For a public hearing.
Public hearing.
Anybody second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, Jim. Thank you, we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
I do have one comment. It might be helpful if you could get this in at least 20 scale so that we could see it better.
You have the technology.
That, that would be, that would be great.
That would help our eyesight a lot.
We've budgeted.
There's a lot of old people up here.
My little ruler and my, my magnifying glass.